Six thirty or thereabouts. Called us meeting in Wallingford Select Board to order August 4th at six thirty. First item of business is then agenda additions and deletions?
None.
None. And Julie's requested an executive session at the start of the meeting for personnel. So we need a second motion and a second to do that.
Move to enter executive session for the purpose of personnel discussion.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Well, do you want, you're gonna invite Julianne?
Hmm?
Okay.
And then, do you want, yeah, we're gonna invite Julianne.
Yes, to include.
Should we?
Yeah.
Okay. So you folks will have to step out.
Okay.
We're out of executive session. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we accept Julie's resignation as of August 30th from the position of town clerk and treasurer.
Is it a resignation or a retirement?
Retirement. Yeah, I guess retirement is a better word.
I mean.
Yeah, retirement.
And that we will post those positions tomorrow for two weeks.
Oh, I guess. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 We're enough.
We're enough with.
We're good.
All good. Minutes of the meeting of July 21st, 2025. How do they look?
Good.
Move that we accept them as written, accept the minutes from last meeting as written.
Second.
Motion's made in second to accept the minutes as written. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
On the disposition?
Let's see, disposition of remaining funds from the Vermont Community Foundation Arts Grants, grant for recreation possibly moved to Wallingford Day and revise six thirty twenty-five pay orders as needed enclosed in the packet about the grant. Who's got something to say about that?
Julie. So this grant was extended. It was supposed to be done by, the final report was due May 1st, but Shannon got it extended to July 31st and then she resigned from the committee so that, you know, it got all through the cracks. So there was eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents left that was not spent. It was gonna be spent on a couple movies and that didn't happen and all that happened. So I got approval through the Vermont Community Foundation to hand it over to the Wallingford Day account to use next year.
That's great.
So we're amending the, I mean, if you give approval, we can amend the pay orders as of June 30th again and put it on there to, put it into their reserve account.
Pay orders for June 30th, retroactive, do it that way?
No, just revise.
Yeah, yeah. Is there a motion for that?
We need a motion to, to accept that?
We're gonna amend.
Yeah, I know what we're gonna do, but.
The minutes to reflect that the leftover amount from the grant can go on to Wallingford Day for next year. Your turn, your turn.
So do we need a motion to?
Yeah, to amend.
Okay, well, and I move to.
And this is, it's on here, the dollar amount.
Okay. Right, right, right. So I move to move the remaining funds from the Vermont Community Foundation Arts Grant to the next year, to the Wallingford Day Fund to produce next year and to revise the six thirty pay orders to show that.
Very good.
Second. Thank you for doing that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Go carry. And pay orders, the regular pay orders. As of August 5th in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. How's it look?
I don't have any questions.
Somebody has to make a motion or I would like it.
I'll move that we accept the pay orders and pay them. August six pay orders is.
All right.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go carry. Year-end financials. For fiscal year '25, proposed twenty-five, twenty-six municipal tax rate. Fiscal year '25, year-end financials are here. Enclosed memo regarding the tax rate. And that's, that's something we have to do that's out of our hands, right?
Year-end income was one million nine twenty-nine ninety-four seventy-four. Year-end total expenses were one million seven eighty-three, seven fifty-five thirty-five, which left us with a surplus of one thirty-seven, two thirty-nine, thirty-nine. Yay. We had a very good year.
So where, where did we come out on the budget for the year?
We came in the black. We have an excess of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Wow, we're good, huh?
Very good.
Huh?
So I had a question about this. I think it's great that we have this surplus, but we also have some capital expenditures, like we've actually signed up to buy a dump truck sometime in the near future. Should we, instead of taking this opportunity to lower the tax rate, should we either keep it the same or maybe lower it just by a little bit and so we can take some of that surplus and put it in a, in the road fund?
The surplus is gonna help us make our budget for next year, but we can't do that. We can't do that.
We can't do what?
We could do it by, if, if we all agreed and then March came and we.
So that decision isn't one we make now, in other words?
No, we can't do that unless, unless you do, unless you vote to the people to set up a sinking fund.
Right, right, I get that.
But we can't do anything.
Right, I guess, but I'm saying is we can't even, like, entertain that, like, this is, this is kinda done.
Right. You have to hold, so like next March, you say if there's a surplus, just like the school does.
Yeah.
Look at their warning. So that's what they do every year.
Okay.
There's excess in the bus fund, so much goes in that. That's the way they do it.
It's gonna make our, our budget lower because of it.
So we can't, like, you have the tax rate put out here, we can't say, well, we're actually gonna keep it the same and, and find out, like, it's, it's just not the way it works.
Right, you have to, you have to.
We add, we add a hundred thousand dollars if you want.
Right, I mean, that's, but that's, that's a budget change and we don't make those decisions now. It's, you know.
Yeah, we, we asked this from the taxpayers and didn't spend it, so we owe them.
Okay, that's how, if that's how it works.
So just something to consider when you do the warning.
Yep. See, we did that with Wallingford Day funds. Sometimes we didn't spend all of Wallingford Day and they didn't want it to roll into the general fund, so they voted a couple years ago to carry that over the newsletter, boy with the boot. So that, you know, you could carry it over. So you'd have to do that with just the general bottom line of the whole budget too.
Okay. So like next year, we could say, hey.
Put that on the ballot.
We wanna start putting in money to a capital fund or whatever and put it on the ballot and say, by the way, we have a surplus from last year, which we could use to seed that fund. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Are we good?
I'm good.
I'm good.
If you wanna, it's a vote to sub the tax rate. You want to actually vote to sub the tax rate?
Yep, so next is the tax rate for fiscal year '26. So at town meeting, the voters approved a general operating budget of one million four eighty-nine, six sixty-nine with one million eighty-one, seven twenty-one to be raised by taxes. So with this carryover of one thirty-seven, two thirty-nine, thirty-nine reduces the amount to be raised by taxes to nine forty-four, four eighty-one, sixty-one. So you take that amount and you divide it by the twenty-five, 2025 grand list, results in a tax rate of point four zero zero five. And that compares to last year's of point four five one three. We're going down five cents.
That never happens.
And our state education tax rate for residents is one point six nine nine cents, which isn't even going up a cent. And non-residents is one point eight three two eight. And that was going up, what, a couple cents? Yep. Three cents. But that's set by the state, so.
So, so we need to set the tax rate?
Yep. It's going down five cents. Yep, so the municipal tax rate is point four zero zero five.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
We do that by motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, is all we, all we need to actually move forward is to the tax rate itself?
The municipal tax, yes, yep.
This is just a fait accompli, there's nothing to debate about it. Just is what, how it comes out, but we have to acknowledge it.
Yeah, okay. Well, then I'll move that we approve a point four zero zero five tax rate for fiscal year '26.
Is that a second? Carolyn's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
So passed.
And the auditors are coming in Thursday to do the audit.
Homestead declaration, late filing penalty. Do you want to assess late penalties to property owners who fail to file a timely homestead declaration? The state allows up to three percent penalty if, if the non-resident rate is higher than the homestead education property rate. Up to eight percent if the non-resident rate is lower than the homestead education property tax rate. In the past, the board has assessed the penalties, but waived them occasionally on case-by-case basis. So.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm interested in how prevalent this is as an issue for your office.
Late filing homes, that a lot of people get penalized. A lot as well. Yeah, right.
But is your.
Sometimes it's a lot of work for us.
Yeah.
If they're late in filing, they get assessed that.
Currently, we don't penalize people if they're late?
Yeah.
What, what do we normally?
Yeah, we do. You, you, last year you assessed this.
Yep.
Okay. And do you recommend this?
Go ahead.
This is for you.
Right? I mean, we always have, so, you know, it's extra income.
So, so what do you?
It is work for us. It is work.
What do you penalize anyone, homestead, what do you penalize? It says up to three or up to eight percent?
I think it's eight percent.
It is eight percent.
Yeah.
Eight, yeah.
It, it wouldn't matter the percentage if, you know, it's no more work one way or the other if the penalty's assessed.
Right.
It's on the.
So should we?
It's school tax. It's on the school tax, yeah.
Would you like to continue as we've done before? Yeah.
You can do this by consensus.
Is there consensus on that?
Yes.
Yeah. Very good.
Any waiving of this has to go to BCA, not the select board. Has to go before the, yeah.
The select board will do it?
No, the board of civil.
You guys, yeah. You wanna motion then?
Well, Sandy?
It was already decided by consensus.
You just decided by, by consensus. You just decided by consensus.
Say what?
You've decided by consensus.
Oh, yeah.
Assessing penalties.
Thank you. You're up. Road Commissioner, report.
Well, a bunch of things to talk about. I don't know which way you wanna go first. Got a dump truck down again. The sixteen Kenworth is down. Got a bad dump cylinder in it. I ordered a new one for that today. Plutch issues, I'm not sure, I haven't got into that yet. Some other hydraulic issues, some belt, uh, control issues that run the hydraulics. They're working on, don't know how far we got today on that. But this is gonna be a substantial amount of money again into that sixteen. So, and it's, and it's down.
That's not good.
The option to pull a cylinder that's, has some wear in the base of it and have it repack, cause the packings are bad, it's leaking out of the packings. For the downtime and the cost of having to pull it, send it to somebody, get the right seal kit, have them tear it apart, put it back together, bring it back and have to put it back in, probably doesn't justify the difference in cost of a new one. New ones around thirty-one hundred. I'm guessing you're gonna get up to a couple grand, twenty-five hundred.
Now, what are you talking about, the part?
The main dump cylinder.
The name?
Lift cylinder on the dump truck.
The hydraulic cylinder?
Yeah, on the dump truck. You, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Plus, you're gonna have a significant amount of downtime.
Oh, yeah, no.
With having it, you know, tore apart, waiting for parts where they said they were gonna have one, it possibly could be here tomorrow. So that truck could be back on the road.
That would get the truck back on the road?
Yeah. The clutch issues and stuff, we gotta figure out what that is. It may be as simple as a clutch break or a clutch adjustment. But I didn't get into that with them today. I ran out of time.
So it sounds like you're recommending that we order the new part rather than?
Oh, I already ordered it.
Oh, okay.
I just ordered it. It was, if it didn't get ordered today, it may have been a week, week, ten days before that truck came out of that land again. It had to be done today.
Okay.
This morning, so I did it.
We approve.
Okay.
It's definitely cheaper than fixing a cylinder.
Well, I'll tear it apart, you know, there's, there's, the problem is the base is where then the tubes get thin and.
And then you don't know what's inside either.
Yep, so, um. Other than that, they've been doing some grading, some brush hogging up on one forty on the back corner and dirt spots. And I know they need to do more. I'm hoping to have a brush hog running by the middle of the week. So I've been starting with some of the roadside. I know we have a bunch of complaints on it and it's something we need to look at next April. Not July, April. Get this set up ahead of time. So we do it in July, starting in July for the first two weeks of July and it's done for the year. Have it pre-done. That's just something to look for.
Perfect time, really.
Cause everybody's either mower is broke or they're so far behind because it's been broke, they're trying to get theirs done and you can't find a rental.
So, so what are we gonna do?
I'm gonna do, try to get my mower running and do some of my tractor and stuff. Well, not my tractor.
Maybe, we'll look at this at budget time too.
I bet you I'm square driving for you.
Yeah. So it's just a matter of getting that put back together so we can get some of this done. I thought we could find a rental, but it's not possible.
Yeah.
What does a brand-new roadside mower cost?
Depending on what you get into, somewheres, that used ones will run anywhere from fifteen thousand up and you don't know what's wrong with them. Or new ones that would cost hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. You, they, they have an attachment that goes right on the front of our cat loader, but it's a hundred grand. Ditch boom mower that goes right on the front of that loader. But, you know. If the town is singing and doing something, they need to get something like a tractor that they, with a bucket on it, they can utilize other part of the year. While they're not using it, they can load with it and stuff, but that, there again, do they wanna tie up that kind of money?
What about other alternatives for next year, like paying somebody to do it for us or sharing equipment with another town?
The sharing part never works.
Sharing is, and we tried, I contacted the one company that rents, it's over six thousand a week.
So it's just something to schedule ahead and if we're gonna do it every year, try to get it set up so we can get at it and do it earlier, not do it as late. Last year, it was totally my fault, machine broke down, it never got going again. So this year, we'll do a different scenario on it. Do we wanna look at Tiff Road now?
Aye.
I went down, talked to the state engineer on it, the water guy, state water guy. And he gave us a permit, I think you all have it in front of you, to fill that bank with big rock, boulders, stacking the best we can in this steep. And then once that's in, put a, you know, regrade it, put a burn back up of big rocks there. And then my suggestion, and I don't know if it's good, bad, or indifferent, I think we should post that road, travel at your own risk. And winter months from November 1st to April 1st will not be maintained. Travel, that, travel at your own risk.
What about the people who live there?
There on the other end, we're gonna have to do there. We're gonna have to do that other end.
Have to go around then.
Yep, and do that other end, that strip for them, yes. But other than that, just, you know, you could plow the road if you wanted to, but I don't see it. I, I'd be smarter to leave the road, smoke covered and hard-packed and come around, plow that in. But I don't know, I don't know who to talk to, find out whether we can put up those signs that say, pass it at your own risk, road not maintained in winter months. Don't know who we need to do, state or board?
I think, to see the class three or non, they give us a category that said non-maintained in the winter. You know, so we have no problem doing that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know the true answer to that, if we can do that. And I don't know whether you can put a sign up that says travel at your own risk.
Well, see, the thing is, class three highway, you could just put it on all of them. You could put them on all and say, travel at your own risk, but.
Well, I think we need to put signage on it if we do this.
I think we have to just put a safe road there.
Yep, put the road back to where it was.
And, uh.
And then put some signage.
And all, you know, it's like the Dougway.
Yeah.
People sometimes go down there and never go back again.
Dougway is wider than that is.
Yes.
Or not as wide as that is. But that's, it's up to you, that's up to the board to decide.
So we, putting this, this, the riprap wall in there, that's gonna make it fairly stable there?
That's what I'm hoping. I talked to the state about it and he thought it would work too.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's a tough scenario being as steep as it is.
Yeah.
And it's short of, you know, coming out into the road, into the riverbed. He didn't mind that because of the slope of the hill. He knows it's gonna come out there a little bit, but it's all ledge, so it's not gonna hurt anything. Push the water back over onto the ledge.
Yeah, he's looking at this drawing, it almost looks, it doesn't look as steep as it is in real life.
No, don't go by that drawing, that's not even close. That's, that was a pretty picture, I think, of something here.
This was, sorry, this was caused by a, a large old tree going over and pulling the bank away with it?
Well, it started, it was part of the, that flood, three years ago in the summer started. It eroded the base of it, then the tree base went over and stuff, so that's why we, I'd like to put rock back in there to shore up the rest of the bank there.
And you're gonna place it, you're not just gonna dump it?
No, I'm gonna place it with a machine, big machine.
And you'll make room for, with the bucket?
Yep, the best we can.
Yeah, push it down.
Stack and chink them back.
That should be, that should be.
Cause I asked him, there's no way to put a locking channel in the bottom on that, so, cause it's ledge, so. He said, do the best you can and work up.
When we were on site, I'm, I'm looking at it with layperson eyes, so forgive me. But I'm seeing other large old trees.
Yeah.
What happens when those fall over and pull the bank further on, on either side?
We'll have to fill the hole. It's all we can do. They are not in the river corridor though. They're outside of the river. The river's what started that. It eroded the bank underneath and then the tree went over.
So is that happening in other sections along the road?
Yeah, the river, that's the only place the river comes near the road. So we gotta hope for the best.
Take the dead ones down.
Hey, get on the job.
We should ask the tree warden to do that.
Yeah.
So we were talking last, when we went there about throwing up that road, making it a class four road, but this is something, is something in between? Like, do we have to do any sort of reclassification?
We can have a class three road and then we, we're allowed to, designated no maintenance in the winter.
Okay, so we can just do that? We don't, that doesn't need to go before the town or?
Yeah, yeah.
Or?
Well, I, I need to double check.
Yeah, and it's, I don't know that myself. I just made that suggestion.
Oh, no, there is, there is the law. I'll have to look at it, but. We'll jump off that bridge when we get to it.
When you say no maintenance in the winter, I, the whole entire road or just a certain section?
Well, your end would be taken care of.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Is it the whole road or is it?
Your section will be maintained. From there, I'm trying to shut my phone off here. It's a new phone. It's not like the old one, that's for sure.
One of our problems was that.
Jesus, oh, just turn down the volume.
Well, let's, keep doing that too. I thought I shut off all volume. We'll see if it makes noise again. Sorry.
We have, well, you know where we are exactly, but one of the problems we had when this event occurred was that we couldn't get deliveries of things because of the road situation. The oil company wouldn't come, we wouldn't get the mail, things like that. So we're just trying to make sure that whatever happens, it's clear enough to everybody that they can come down, but they have to be able to come down and then.
Yeah, we won't put that road maintains, winter maintenance sign until below your driveway.
Okay.
That way they, they won't see it till they can go to your house.
Right, and it, and is the road gonna still be, it's not gonna be blocked?
This is where it allows us to do, this is state stuff.
Yeah, I have to walk up when this happens.
When are you gonna do this?
Well, so that's, the number for you is Phil's, Phil's estimate.
My estimate for machinery and trucking time. That, we're talking six foot, four to six foot rock, and that's, that's something we wanna put in a town box.
No, I know that. That's why you.
I've got a ledge box in one of my trucks.
On your, okay. Five thousand.
And then the estimator, time to put it, place in place, the big machine.
That doesn't include, this price doesn't include materials, right?
Materials or whatever, it's sold by the ton when you load it.
How long will it take?
Probably two, two, three days. It's gonna be sometime in September, about.
So are we deciding that we're gonna do this? It seems like we were discussing closing the road altogether.
But that's gonna get you into the state saying whether that's a trail or not and then there's others. As far as I can understand. Like, as far as I can understand.
Send you the, the VLCT information, though, I mean, you can reclassify road, there's a whole process if you reclassify a road. Just continue on.
I guess I'm just concerned about getting into something where we, I mean, this estimate is quite reasonable, but five thousand, and then the next time some, something eats a big chunk out of the road, it's ten thousand, and we just.
But that's the same as any road we repair. When a cobbler goes up, we repair it, put it back.
Well, return here, though, if you've invested, say, a hundred thousand dollars in Tiff Road, maybe you should say, "Tiff Road should be closed below your house."
Plymouth went into debt five million dollars for Irene. The municipality went into debt five million dollars for their roads.
Who?
Plymouth.
Oh.
It's in the article.
Yeah, it's.
It's our obligation to take care of Class Three.
If you shove one road down and then you get into another road issue where it washes, and, you know, it's a domino effect.
I would agree with Mr. Barker that it's our obligation to take care of roads, but I think if a certain road is kind of marginal, it's, there are other ways of getting around, and it's a huge repair cost, and looming ahead, more repair costs, then you have the legal right, as a select board, to close the road, to declare it no longer a road. Yes, you have to go through state shenanigans, but you can do it.
You said the key word, though, "select board," not me.
Right.
Can I say something? More history. Everybody I know who grew up in that area, Tiff Road is in better shape today than it's been in the last sixty years.
Overall, that road is very.
But also, Irene, because I was down in Maryland and Joyce is here, um, I came back up, Tiff Road was the only road open. Scottsville Road washed out.
Yeah.
And it was out for almost two weeks or something like that, and then there's no way, Tiff Road at least caught you up to.
Yeah, it's an access.
It's a bad road, and I agree with you, however, it's been that way for.
Two hundred years.
We don't know about that one.
And it's better than a lot of other roads, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna give it for another two hundred.
Yes.
All good for us.
So you guys, I thought, last time we met, that you guys were sort of advocating closing it, and it sometimes just.
Well, one thing is, it didn't matter to us as ideas, we, we rarely go down that road.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we don't.
I'm a coward.
That's just, and, and a lot of that is not because the road is so bad, it's also people coming up.
Yeah, you could get forced off the side.
I mean, they come up with the road at thirty-five miles an hour, and you're going down at, at fifteen.
And I look down the side.
Put, put a speed limit fifteen on there. That'll, that'll say use caution.
Well, it is only twenty-five, and then no one pays attention to that.
No, they just go over.
And really, it's, and really, the place that washes out is that blind turn, and if you don't see somebody and you're on the outside, you have to go out.
Yeah.
And that pushes pressure on the road.
Yeah.
And that's the problem, is people just don't pay attention, and if you have a UPS truck, they just come.
They don't come?
Huh?
UPS?
They don't back up, they just come on, you know, I mean, they don't pull over. It must be, and one of the things, if you're trying to work on that road, and it's hard to do, and even in the wintertime, is where are the shoulders that you can pull over? That's the problem, you can't see them.
Yeah.
And that's the real problem, you don't know where to pull over. And if you're going down there, we're always thinking, come up the hill, because at least we have the hill, the hill. But you can't see that, and that's the problem. I don't know if there's any way to mark that. Here's a, here's a pool, because you watch people, they go beyond the pool, and then they're blocking the road, and you can't, you have to even back up. That's the problem with Tiff Road, it's not always as much, it has ruts, actually, it, it has less ruts from where it washed out down to Seventh than it does above it, so it's just, and it's been that way for a year. I haven't met anybody who lived in that area who's been on Tiff Road, said, "Oh, it used to be worse." And it is, we thought, when we first moved here, we thought it was an old, uh, tree cutting road, and it wasn't in use, it didn't have any signs up. In fact, when we first came to look at the house we moved into, it's, Tiff Road had a sign right at the, the old Powers Farm. It said, "Tiff Road." I said, "Okay, but that's going in somebody's driveway." And that's where Danby said, "Oh, that's where Danby stops," and it goes down. With Wallingford didn't have a sign up for another ten years, saying Tiff Road was really Tiff Road. So I, I agree with you in concern, but I think some of it is just, it's, it happens anyway, it's just a slow process. It doesn't happen every year. And it's been a long time we've been talking about. It was in the town plan before this town plan, saying, "We need to fix Tiff Road." So it's been a, it hasn't washed out since, and it did during Irene, it did not wash out. It's one of the few roads that did not wash out.
What I propose doesn't mean we have to fix this. This is up to the board.
Right.
It's just something I propose for alternate.
You told us that enough, okay?
Well, I, I don't want to get stuck in the middle of this one.
Right, good.
That's your decision over there.
So the five thousand seventy-five is just his cost? Do you, what are you anticipating, materials?
There'll be another twenty-five hundred material.
I think we're forgetting the fact that one, there are six property owners on that road, six, and one of them doesn't want it reclassified. And so, how can you do that to anyone about a piece of property that was gonna take the road away from you?
I think we had talked about, uh, giving that owner access through a gate that they'd have control over.
Well, you, you, you should, uh, you should get something written from him that he's not gonna take you to court.
Well, select boards have survived closing roads, even when people have objected.
When?
It's done, it happens.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. Tell me when would that happen?
I'm sure it's happened somewhere in the state.
No, it didn't, not here.
Well, maybe not in Wallingford, but.
Huh?
Maybe not in Wallingford, but I'm sure it's happened somewhere in the state that a road has been closed.
Oh, show me. You sure, you sure, then, you can show me.
Oh, I could use the research for that.
I, I, uh, no.
But you know, also, when you look at the owners of the road, actually, the people that have an address on that road are the ones that are really affected by it, because the people I know who live down on Route Seven, their access to their property is really Route Seven. Tiff Road is not where they get access from, because they couldn't get down.
If they want to subdivide, they're gonna have to, uh, they can't go, they can't subdivide unless they can go to Class Three Road.
Yeah, but.
They can't.
The hills, and, the hills and behind are so steep that you couldn't subdivide to do anything.
Go over to Hawk and see, see what's steep.
Oh, I, I know what's steep is, but I mean, the same thing is, it's really, I think the quarry has a legitimate concern, because that is their land all the way up. We have a concern because it's, we have part of it. Jennifer, the old Powers Farm, has a concern. Now Keith Mallard, which, I think he was at, I don't know if he was there or not, I can't remember, but he has a concern, he has forty acres beside us, and it's all in Wallingford, but the old Doty Road is his only access, and that's been thrown up years ago, and he has no access. He has to come through Danby, and he actually is building a road from Danby, or Jennifer's property, and it goes around the top of the bridge, because if he comes from Tiff Road, he has to go up thirty feet, he can't quite do that, and that's all rock and ledge and everything else. But, but he has a concern, too, but his concern is the old Doty Road, which you all probably didn't see, it's a little trail that goes off the side before you get down to our driveway. And that actually was an interesting road, because that went from Tiff Road to West Hill.
West Hill.
And that was your only access, but that was.
We would have to ask those landowners what they think. We don't know.
Yeah.
We know, we know three out of the six people, and, uh, we, we have to see.
Could we call the question? Could we call the question, could we?
Yes, uh, make a motion.
Also, are, are we, are we debating whether, like, the motion that we make is to, whether to go and authorize approximately seventy-five hundred bucks with a labor and material to repair that road? That's, that would be the only decision we'd be making now, right?
Right.
Yeah, as far as I know.
And at some point, we could decide whether that's gonna be maintained in the winter or not.
Yeah, that's, that's something you have to look into.
Right, right. I mean, it says, you handed out some statutes.
Yeah, that was the way I got off, we all had definitions of what all those roads meant.
It says the select board has the authority to determine whether a Class Three Highway or a section of highway should be plowed or made negotiable during the winter.
Yeah.
The statute says.
We can do that.
So presumably, we could do that.
If it's not going to be plowed, though, I would say that there must be some way that we can hook in so that emergency vehicles know that they have to come in from the other end, perhaps, because otherwise.
You just put a sign up.
Yeah.
Yeah, most emergency vehicles, our thing is, when we call in, we call nine-one-one, we live in Danby.
Yeah.
They'll come from Danby side, but that's our mailing address. In fact, we go to the Wallingford postal, it's, "Tiff Road doesn't exist." It's in Danby, which is not exactly true.
We had a great time when we moved here. Getting mail was interesting.
But I think, I think you're, so it is there, but actually, the expense is not that expensive, and you get to see if it stabilizes, and it's been not in great shape. If you do, you know, don't plow in the wintertime, that's actually not a bad idea, because most people going down it are not thinking straight.
No, it sounds like most of the issues, when you were talking about the issues of driving, seemed like the winter was the worst, because you were pushing over and you didn't know where to go.
Well, you can't see, you know, you've got snow covering it, that's why I'm a chicken, I will not go near, I will not go down that road.
I'm same as you. I will drive farther to avoid that type of land.
And it's only, it's four minutes. If you go around Scottsville, it's not a long.
A train, train trip with a fire truck is ten minutes, though, or, or an ambulance.
We, we, but it's, it's not like, the road is not that long, it's like Dougway is the one I always think, because it's the most, that's not in great shape. But if you had somebody on West Hill Road had an emergency at the west end of West Hill Road, if Dougway is not passable, then you have to go all the way around the one forty and come in, that's a long, this is, four minutes is not a time-consuming.
Most of the owners will tell you that every minute counts.
I know, I know.
Okay?
But in, in the case of, say, we say we, what's our address, it's Danby, so they're probably, nine-one-one would go, it's Danby, wherever Danby has.
They'll go, they go right to your phone and they'll get their, your address right there.
Yeah, and it'll be, say, Danby, and then Danby is the first, that is actually.
Well, Rutland Regional is, is in Rutland, you know, Rustus, what?
We don't have a motion.
They'll do what they do.
Could I try a motion? Move to approve the, uh, limited repairs on Tiff Road as presented by Mr. Baker, and the addition of signage, uh, saying, "Travel at your own risk," and closing the road during winter months.
I'm not sure we can put, put up a sign that says, "Close," but we'll.
I mean, not maintained in winter months.
Not maintained in winter.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we can say that.
All right, so I amend the motion to say, signage would be, that the road will not be maintained during winter months.
Winter months, yes.
And we have the authority to do that, put a sign like that?
Well, that I don't know, that's something that you're gonna have to look into. Is it? Okay, I don't know, I just made that suggestion.
No, it's in. Make your copy of what Class Three Roads can do, I mean, they have it.
I mean, should, should we move to approve the, the first part of your motion, the, um,
Repair.
Repairs, and then maybe do a little research on what we, what our options are for.
I would not be able to support the temporary or limited repairs without those signage designations. What, I mean, the majority would carry.
Is there a second?
Well, I don't think, I'm still trying to determine if we've got the right motion, because I, I, I don't, are we, are we okay saying right now, we're gonna put up signs that say, "This road is not maintained in the winter?" Like, can we do that?
Do what?
Can, can we do that?
Do, do, put a.
Put up signs that this road is not maintained in the winter.
What do you do with the tunnel? The section of tunnel that you don't maintain in the winter?
Nothing.
Nothing.
I don't know if there's a sign up there or not. I don't think so.
Just people know that it's not maintained.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a immediate issue, because you had the signs that can close, and people were still driving up it behind your dump truck.
Yeah.
It's sort of, they do what they want. But again, you're, you're told if it's not maintained, so it's the best you can do.
It's not so much other people, it's the people, emergency services have to know what to do appropriately, too, though.
Right, right.
And that's something that you have to be, be cognizant of, is that, I don't know how you tell them that ahead of time, but that's the way that they have to know.
Is there a second? And we have a motion on the floor.
I, I'm s-
There's problems with the motion.
Yeah, I'm still trying, yeah, I'm still trying to get com- that's, what I worry about is like, emergency services, it says, "The road, the road's not maintained in the winter."
Does anybody want to make a motion that Phil just fixes it and we could argue about the signs later?
Well, and there's a motion on the floor, we're waiting for a second. And there's a motion on the floor.
But if there's no second, it's moved.
So that's what we need, to make sure there's not a second.
So we need a new motion?
Yeah, half, two times.
No, no second, okay.
So, how about, uh, Phil fixes the road? Anybody got that motion?
Yeah, I'll move that, um, like, the first part of Ann's motion, that, that we approve Phil Baker to go ahead and, and do this fix of the road, the cost of approximately seventy-five hundred ton materials, and that will allow us to reopen Tiff Road for now, and that, I think that's the extent of my motion.
Hold on a minute. Another second? Any discussion? We did, we did it already, right? Hold on, some papers here.
Hi.
I don't want to discuss.
Name.
Name.
Probably didn't come here.
One, one name. Okay. Anything else, Phil?
The sand shed.
Well, yeah, what's.
That's later, okay. We'll leave that alone, then. I think that's, that's all for me.
That's coming up for example, but not here.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Honorable mentions. Dennis DuHeng, what, how do we say that?
Dennis DuHeng.
Duchaine.
DuHeng?
Duchaine.
There's no, okay. Duchaine.
Duchaine.
DuHeng?
Okay.
DuHeng.
Uh, for repairing the basement exit door. Thank you, Dennis. Now, his public comments. You have a public comment?
No, I'm on it for Wallingford Day.
Wallingford Day reimbursement request.
Now he's on it.
I sent Sandy a invoice, I'm sorry, I'm Todd Galliano with Volnet. We got a donation from Whirly's World for partial of what they brought to us for Wallingford Day. I'm just trying to pull this up real quick. Sandy, I sent it, did you see it?
Yep, it's, uh, one thousand fifty-four.
So the tot, do you see the total, they, because twenty-five hundred of that was a donation to the town, and then what was left to be paid is one thousand fifty-four dollars, so we just wanted to get approval from you that we could get that paid.
So it was three thousand five fifty-four.
Yeah.
And then discounted twenty-five hundred, with a balance of one fifty-four left.
And that'll come out of the Wallingford Day fund.
So, Heather Johnson requested this item be added to the agenda, she said Todd Galliano wanted to be reimbursed one thousand fifty-four dollars paid for bounce house, bounce house staff at Wallingford Day. What would you like to do?
I do have some questions. Um, I think in the spring you might have been here, Mr. Galliano, when we talked about having bounce houses at all, and, uh, we got a full presentation of the costs and what to expect and so forth, and the board approved it, so, um, I'm concerned about this later addition to, of, you know, it's, it was information that was not included in the initial presentation that we based our decision on.
So, I, I believe that we didn't know what the total would be after we invited them to come on bringing tents and chairs and stuff like that. At that meeting, I came to talk about the bouncy houses, so that we knew that we were having people there that were trained to be able to, uh, supervise who was being. that were trained to be able to supervise who was being in there for safety, and after we received this, I think part of the problem is, as Wallingford Day, we're raising all this money and we're not allowed to spend it without coming to you and asking you. So we have the money to be able to pay this, but we need to come to you to be able to say that yes, this can be paid because of the dollar amount, which is something that I would like to change for next year, but I don't think tonight's the meeting to do that.
So it was just like some, some costs that we didn't know to...
Correct. There's, there was a lot of extra costs along the way throughout everything, but we've been able to pay that as it went. So when we were, when we were submitted, when the bill was submitted to us before Wallingford Day, we were either not knowing to have them, or this was gonna have to be paid. So it was, where we screwed up was we put out that $2,500 was the donation to get your banner up here, and get your banner up at the ball field, and when we put that out there, it wasn't the people that were donating, $4,000 were getting their name up there, it was a $2,500 donation. So when the donation came in at $3,500, Jeremy wanted to be reimbursed for the difference, and we weren't aware of that at the time, but we had raised enough money that that was able to be taken care of. So to not, not have the bouncy houses at Wallingford Day, I paid it to make sure that we could have it.
Okay.
So I've already spent the money on it.
Okay.
And I wanted to be able to be reimbursed for the money that was spent so that we could have it for Wallingford Day.
So it sounds like it's a learning, it's learning for next year, getting everything in clearer.
For everybody, correct. And I, and I also think that for next year, we would like to, and I can't really speak because Heather's not here, but we would like to change how we're able to spend the money that we're raising, because we're going out and approaching to all these people to raise money for Wallingford Day, and then we're not allowed to just write checks to them or spend money without...
Make Wallingford Day private.
No.
No?
We're not discussing that today.
Yeah, and that's why I said I don't think it's a discussion for today, I just wanted to...
I think that's a whole other issue.
I wanted to make sure that I could go to Julie and have a check then, and that was, needed to be approved by you.
I think the, the issue arose in the last week when we discovered that the bouncy house person wasn't going to provide their insurance certificate.
No, that, no. There was a lot of back and forth, there was a few things that were miscommunicated. It was never that he wasn't gonna provide insurance, but he did do, Sandy got all of his information. That wasn't an issue. Issue was when we first asked him to send us a insurance certificate, that one had lapsed because the year changed, which all of ours do. Phil's, yours, yours lapsed, mine lapsed. We send out a new one after the fact, so he hadn't done that yet at that time. And then there was some stuff that went back and forth on a Peg TV interview and a few other things that created some confusion, and we squashed all that, so that was taken care of. And in that, we were, there is other people that donated more money, I donated a lot more than $2,500, and I'm not looking to get all that back, I just, this was something that was big for the town, and I thought it would be reasonable. We voted on it at Wallingford Day Committee that we would reimburse Jeremy for this, but we had to bring it in front of the select board, there was no way for us to do that before Wallingford Day, and we didn't wanna not have tents or bouncy houses, so we approved it at Wallingford Day Committee on the idea that I would come here in front of you later, hoping that you would approve that we pay that out of the money that we've raised.
So this is, this is just money from the Wallingford Day account that'll be then transferred to you to reimburse you?
Yes, and if we wanna do it to Jeremy, he'll just reimburse me back if it's easier because it was Whirly's World. If we write, if Julie writes the check to Whirly's World, he'll reimburse me separately. Either way, we just wanna be able to spend that money out of the Wallingford Day, and we, we all approved it in our meeting.
Have you brought this to the Wallingford Day in their debriefing meeting after Wallingford Day?
Yes, yeah, and we all voted on it.
It isn't reflected in the minutes?
Uh, it's actually the meeting before that, before that last one.
What is, do you remember the date?
Um, I can pull it up for you.
July 15th.
So this, this invoice is Whirly's World, right?
Whirly's World, yeah.
Whirly's World, and, but this is an additional invoice, is there an invoice? Oh, it's on the back. That's it. Okay. So this, this is what we got, it says, says, uh, it's dated February 11th.
Yeah, this is, he gave it to us February 11th, we went over it in the February 15th meeting, we all agreed to pay it in the February 15th meeting, and we weren't able to be here in front of you until this evening.
So Sandy or Julie, is it better to write the check to Whirly's World or directly to Todd? Like, which, does it matter?
Yeah, why didn't he just submit his bill?
Did they give us the insurance binder?
Huh?
Did Whirly's World give us the insurance binder?
Yeah, that's why we thought you were paying Whirly's World.
That's what I would say we should reimburse.
Yeah.
You just covered it so they would show up.
I just covered it so they would show up.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you saw on the email, it said if this isn't paid by Friday at 3:00 PM, we're not coming. So I just paid it so that they would come.
So, I guess it was, if we're to do this sort of like officially, should we write a check to them?
Yeah.
Yes, and that's what I was suggesting, we write the check to Whirly's World, he'll reimburse me, he knows that I paid this for him to come.
So can we just add this to the, is it okay if we add it to the next pay orders in two weeks, or?
Oh, you can do it however you wanna do it.
Yeah, we can.
I figured I would just give you the copy of the invoice so you had it, and then we could get a check out to him, and then...
Depending on what you decide tonight, we can just add it, rather than revise tonight's pay order in two weeks, if that's what you wanna do.
And then we'll discuss how we spend Wallingford Day money next year at a later date.
All right, I mean, well, I, I guess, I mean, would you just buy a motion?
Well, we have to have a motion, yeah.
Well, I, I would move then to, um, cut a check to show up in next month's pay orders to Whirly's World for $1,054.
Second thought?
Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Nay.
Three and one.
Thank you for covering it.
Of course. Did anybody get to come and enjoy Wallingford Day out of this group where you're there?
Sure, I was here.
Yep, that's great.
I bought a t-shirt.
Awesome, that's great.
I got one, too.
Fireworks were fabulous.
Good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Both of my kids worked it.
Next up, Cecile Better with the Telecommunications Board.
Yeah, you should have a coffee, too, right?
Yes.
Good night, folks. Phil and I worked on the survey together, and then when it came to time to do the report, all of a sudden it occurs to me if anybody didn't like the report, it wasn't in a good position. So any mistakes, any recommendations that are not right, it's me, I'm just a citizen. Jill didn't see the report until tonight. One of the things I have to say, is the last time I was here, I have a whole different feeling about the whole telecommunications day, watching Texas. You have to understand, I've watched water come across my property seven times. And the first time, I went to the hotel after I walked home, and I had a foot of water, okay? 26 feet of water in an hour made a big impression on me in Texas. And so all of a sudden, I'm thinking to myself, when I'm looking, what we were looking at and the way we started was, the whole thing was electric power. Now the GMP has committed not to further off the power, or not, or to have it down less, that changed our whole attitude. And for a couple of years, if you look at the, the results themselves, and it was not a very large, large response, but I've talked to a lot of people, very few people have had any extended outage. Now, you and I can remember when we've had seven days.
Yeah.
Two weeks, you know, hardly got through a winter without many days. But that's no longer the issue. And I'm not sure, and certainly with my head, I'm, I'm just one head, it seems to me that we have to be, to somehow look at this as a system. I started, I did an email to the emergency person, and, and I have some ideas, but I do think, from the Texas situation, we need to start looking at things differently. And I've, I've outlined a few things of my thinking, and again, Joe is not responsible if anybody thinks this woman is crazy, I mean, but the other thing that I think was mind-boggling for me in this very small city, and with the people I talked to, there aren't two people that have the same situation anymore.
Nope.
I mean, we all had, when I was, not so long ago, everybody had the same phone company, everybody had the same power, everybody had the same TV, you know, and now we're all over the map, some people have this, some people have that. The big thing is, without cell service, we are extremely vulnerable. And as I talk to people, a lot of people have given up their landlines. And when you don't have cell service, you're in a whole bunch of doo-doo, because you have nothing that anyone can do. You can't get reached, and you can't reach anybody. And as I started to think about looking at the town as a system, we're gonna have to look at some systems that go beyond this little survey, into things like, do we want an, you know, a big, whatever you wanna call them, some kind of a noise that alerts people of needs to evacuate? Do, what do we need? We know the world as we've known it is not the world we're gonna be living in five years from now. Everywhere is changing, and the bigger thing that I'm noticing, again, I've been through seven floods, is the fact there's a lot more violence in the weather than, than years ago. I mean, she comes up quick, you know, the ice storms, I don't, were always much more gentle to me than the floods. But anyway, that kind of thing. But I'm thinking that, the other thing that astounded me in the conversations I had with people, if people have a landline, they are not aware, some of them, about the battery that needs replacing.
Yeah. Oh.
That came as a shock to some people because they have a plug-in phone, and they have a rotary phone, and therefore they would be fine, and they were, in, in, in the last go-rounds. The thing is, it didn't go on long enough, that they were, their battery was dead. So I, I'm looking at things like the difference between information, what kinds of things we can do in terms of safety for folk, to alert folk that there's dangerous, danger. You know, east Wallingford, if you think about 140, and you think about those two rivers that come through our town, you know, each of those bridges in my time at my house have gone out. And then in Sugar Hill, there have been some other things, but now, and, and one of the things I had never seen was on the river across the road that goes up 155, how that rerouted herself with Irene. It's a whole different stretch of road. And I remember when I first bought the house in '71, the McCanns across the road showed me pictures of Mrs. Cole's house breaking off, and it was going down the road with, still with a candle being lit, which was gave me some pause. But anyway, those kinds of things. I don't know that we can fix the things themselves, but how do we alert people that they need to be prepared? This is a very serious entity. I was stunned that there is no locale in the state of Vermont that houses people's information. I called Julie, and Julie said that there isn't one, there's no directory here. There's no one place. If you want VT Alert, you have to enroll.
Yeah, yeah.
They will keep your thing. Landlines are still tied to 911. I've confirmed that three times, I wasn't sure if that was true. VTAL said so, E-911 said so, and another executive in the state said so, that, that wasn't going down. So we have those kinds of things that we can, that we can utilize. So all of this to say, I have no, nothing that I'm gonna present for a motion or, or whatever, but I think that the idea of telecommunications becomes more central as an information key both directions, and also, and, and the whole thing with, with Carrick, Texas, if they had had their alarm system in place, like the neighboring town did, people would have been evacuated. And during the night, and now I'm thinking to myself with a heat pump, I used to always listen to the river. I knew when the river was coming, you know, I would wake up, like, to go to the bathroom, and I'd say, oh my heavens, the river's high. And I'd be alert, I'd, I'd leave on more lights and that kind of thing. But now with the heat pump, I don't hear it. And I think that we need to be aware that we need to have some ways of making a noise, and we can't depend on the telephone.
There, there is an enrollment you can do that calls you and says there's a storm or there's a flood, and you can enroll it.
That's the VT Alert, that's part, that's that.
So would it help if, if we put something in the Front Porch Forum or, or the Wallingford Standard that said, this is how you can be alerted for disasters?
A reminder would be good, I mean, I know, it would be a good reminder, I know through the years, that's been in the newsletter multiple times.
Yeah.
On Front Porch Forum.
Yeah.
And also, and this is, the other thing is, that, you know, we, we have this whole thing with privacy and all that, you know, is if there would be a way that we could organize a something so that people would be, I don't know how they did this, but also in the town neighboring to Carrick, Texas, people were texted. Now, I don't know how that town, that city did that. I don't know what kind of a mechanism would hold that, I've tried to find out, but I didn't, and I don't know. But I think that if we could have, let's say, east Wallingford, a way of, of locating, let's say, 100 families, and then they could get to other people, south Wallingford, the village, and people register, not that we would say, you must, but for evacuation, like in Irene, Mrs. Dubois, many people in my neighborhood were evacuated. And they were, they were called because people had their numbers. Everybody had the landline, it was in the phone book.
Right.
You know, I don't wanna take more of your time, but the other thing is, as a Board of Selectmen, as you're thinking about renovations, this is something I know very well, we have to start thinking differently to be safe, and particularly with telecommunications. After the first flood, my father insisted that I move the power box, which required almost an act of Congress from the cellar to the first floor. But I kept my power in all of these storms. None of my neighbors have. And as people are renovating and they're coming for renovations, that, that's item four at the bottom, excuse me, item five at the bottom of the page there, but as people are coming in for permits and stuff, code may not be correct in that regard if you're putting them in the cellar. code may not be correct in that regard if you're putting them in the cellar for heat. I mean, it's like, all those people that you're buying out have their furnaces in the cellar. They had to replace them right after that '23 flood. And I think we've got to start to look at it as a system to all these kinds of problems coming together in our families, in our town. Anyway, I apologize if they can see.
Thank you, thank you for, do you have another direction you're going, or is this it?
Well, for me, I mean, you certainly have better heads than mine, I'm not one head. But it would seem to me that if a little group of some old, some real old timers that really know the lay of the land, and some new timers that can really know digital, can somehow come up with a needs assessment about how to keep the town safe. That, for me, would be my bottom line in this.
How to keep yourself safe. How to keep yourself safe, that's the bottom line, right there.
And the thing that we will recognize, which I'm recognizing, at least from Texas, is if we had kept, if people had been kept safer, the town would be much better off right now. It cost them billions of dollars. The town next to them, where this lad's grandfather had died, and he made sure they had these big boom things, sirens that went off. When some little thing flipped, the siren started. And that told people they had X amount of time. And then they have another thing for a tornado. But he, the town didn't wanna spend the money. But this kid, this was his life thing, with his grandfather should not have died. He got money for those sirens and all that stuff, and it worked. Not one person died in the town neighboring Cary. And that, I mean, when you think of how much that saved, not only for people's lives and all that, but all that didn't have to happen. The town didn't have to take care of.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Cecile. Thank you.
And if there's anything else I can do, just give me a call. I'm in the phone book even.
Thank you so much.
Is that your first one there?
Oh, boy.
Oh, it's two there.
It's mine. Now, the black one, no, the black one is mine.
Oh.
I don't know, Steve Allen. Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Same chef bid, go to me. I have them?
Yeah, I thought I saw. Yep, printed out. Which one are your piles?
One of my piles.
There you go.
Okay.
That one, and then right underneath it, and then this is from February.
You got, you got three?
Just, these are the two that came.
Huh?
These are the two that came this time. These are the two that we've got for this, for today.
For today?
Yep, and that's just an older one.
Oh, okay.
For comparison.
Okay. So.
This first one from Green Mountain Welding, there's a lot of mentioning the PSS acronym. What is that? Says, no anchor bolts, 11 later concrete. Unfortunate by PSS. Building installation not included in building price by PSS, root PSS.
Below, it says quotes from PSS are valid for 30 days.
So is Green Mountain Welding is?
Doing business as?
It sounds like they're.
So package steel systems.
Yeah, next page.
Oh, okay.
So apparently, they're purchasing a steel building from Sutton, Mass., and Green Mountain Welding is installing it.
I didn't see the numbers on the bread loaf thing.
Yeah, it's on, what page is that on?
That was on the front page too, I think.
No, it's on that wrong page.
First two pages, I think.
The bread loaf, their actual quote, I think, is on.
It's on like a back page. On the page, yeah.
Price differential is pretty big.
There's quite a difference in, there's a lot more concrete. See, this one does have concrete foundation in it.
It's dirt floor?
Green Mountain has no foundation with it. You bid just the building.
Where's the numbers on the bread loaf?
I, I wanna test.
Okay, good, because they have your February one.
That's fine, I just wanna say something about it when you get to that point.
Sure, go ahead.
So, so I think part of the problem is when we're bidding on this, and we're just, it's not apples for apples. So we're not getting this as an open bid with an already engineered plan with exactly what you want. So I've spent a lot of time on this, my guys have sat in the office and spent a lot of time on this, prior to this being an open bid. And I haven't bid currently on this because the prices change so frequently. And if we're looking at doing this two years from now, it's gonna be a lot different than it is right now today. And, and we're also not looking at apples for apples. So I could bid against this based on however I wanna build the building, looking at what you're looking at for a size, and we're gonna take this down, and however that's gonna work. But without having a concrete plan of exactly what you're getting, and exactly how it's gonna be, your bids are gonna be so far apart that you're looking at, that it's gonna be very hard for you to decide what you wanna go with, because you're not getting the same thing. So if you, one bid is from Bread Loaf, and then you have another bid from Green Mountain, they're gonna be way different, mine's gonna be way different. You're not actually looking at three equal bids to choose from of what you're getting for quality, what you're getting for work, and how it's engineered. If that makes sense to you.
Three different buildings.
Exactly. So you're looking at three completely different buildings. As far as snow load, as far as the floor load with concrete, as far, I mean, one of them we did, we talked about just doing frost walls with a dirt floor.
Yeah, dirt floor, that's on this bid.
Right, so depending on how far that is, there was another issue with water that came up.
Yep.
So depending on how all of that lays out, it changes the bid drastically to look at. So if you look at one, and it seems like it's quite a bit different, it's because it is.
And I think, I think we made some decisions since you did this bid, that like with the dirt floor and the concrete walls with, with.
Yeah.
With basic.
High lasters.
Well, the state recommended two-by-four knockouts so the water could come in and come out.
Yeah.
Although the front is wide open.
Correct.
60 feet of it's wide open.
Correct.
Or whatever the width is in the front.
So I just think, when you're looking at these bids, I think, I would throw an updated one in, but I also don't wanna spend the time and the money to put all this together when we still don't know exactly what you're getting. It's still, this isn't, it'd be different. Like normally, when I open a bid, I have an engineered set of plans. This is what you're specking, this is what you want. This is really basic, what I got. So it can go, I mean, I could way overbuild this, or I could way underbuild this, and still meet the spec. And I could be a half a million dollars difference in my bid. Just from how I decided to do it. So I don't know if that helps you at all in looking at these, but.
Do you get a kit?
We do, I have a.
So you engineered a set of?
Yes.
You do?
Yep. So I own a franchise with Capital Steel. So all of our pricing comes through Capital Steel, which is a, yeah, worldwide company. I bought a franchise with them 15 years ago. Any of our steel buildings that come, I don't know if you've seen Rosen and Berger, and Rollin, any of the big steel buildings that we do, all come through them.
What about Morton?
Morton is not a steel building.
It's not?
No, it's a wood structure with steel siding. They don't even compare. So this is what I mean, there's so many options. I think Sandy, I sent you one originally with wood, steel siding, another one with steel. I talked to Phil about open span steel, which makes a big difference. So I think, I don't wanna say it's a planning issue, but it kinda is. I think, depending on when you're looking to have this done, how far out the planning is, exactly what you're trying to get, otherwise you're just gonna see the bids are gonna be way different from each other. And that will make your decision a lot harder.
So, I mean, does that sound like you're suggesting that we just, we revisit the, our specification for this to make it more exact? And then solicit more bid, like revise bids or something?
I do believe so. I also think that the time crunch is a thing. So looking at how much everything changes, steel changes a lot. But if I were to, I'm more than willing to be involved more. I don't wanna just be a bid for you guys to look at. I would like to bid on it as working. But I also think it needs to be more specific, so the bids that you're getting are actual apples for apples. Because you're, what you're looking at right now is not the same buildings. Clearly, you can see the difference in numbers.
I forget, on the RFP, we specify paving?
No, no.
So that's on this, that you're scheduling paving, it's not even?
Who?
Bread loaf.
I didn't even read through it all the way, I just saw. They did, the biggest thing I saw with it was is they had 11 or 12-foot concrete walls.
Yeah. Well, we priced it a couple different ways, Phil. We did 12-foot ones too. We did 12-foot ones too, because of the adjusted water height.
Yeah, and then they readjusted.
You still have to go down, so.
They have, near as I can tell, they had, they got 14 feet of wall with a two-foot footing on this. And they're saying that.
Look at the grade spec though, what's the height above grade?
14 feet, pretty near.
14 feet above grade?
Yeah.
11 feet.
11 feet.
So I had 12 with eight feet above grade. So I think this is, this is part of my point. They're gonna be so completely different because I think it would almost benefit to have somebody with Phil build exactly what you want, so that we know exactly what you want, and then bid it. So that we're not getting, I mean, we have a rough idea of what you want, but everybody's gonna build differently.
The problem here is, I'm not trying to be a jerk about this, but the cart is way before the horse. You guys are getting bids you don't have money for. You need to get your money first. Then, once you get your money, then you know what you can do with, you can send out this specification, I want this, this, and this, and say it's gonna be done within six months. And they can bid it and give you a firm price. This price, like Todd's saying, is gonna change five times before that you even think about doing anything.
Well, the thing is, to get, to get the money, we're gonna have to borrow it or issue a bond, and we can't really get that in front of the.
And you're gonna need a number.
So I was kinda hoping that.
We can't justify that to the residents of Wallingford, but we don't know what.
This needs to be set, that should have been done first. As far as I'm concerned, you need, you can't do anything without money.
Yeah, but we can't request a, I mean, if we don't know how much it's gonna cost, we can't.
But you've got a rough idea, you can face a half a billion.
200,000, somewhere in there.
You could be from 200,000 to a million. So you have to, you have, this is why I'm saying I believe that you need to be able to come up with a plan. I'm more than willing to put stuff out there for you to base ballgame something off of, to say, look, this is the money that we need to raise. But I wouldn't try to sign a contract with you right now because there's no money involved, and we don't know how many times it's gonna change between now and when you actually raise the money. So for me to actually bid on this right now, the first time I bid on this was, what, three years ago?
That's correct, I was just gonna say that. When you started with this, it's more than doubled since he started.
Correct.
And by the time we get our financing and figure out what we're gonna do, it's gonna do, go half again more. I understand you want a price, but you could take and honestly say just what Todd said, 200 to a million dollars, somewhere's in that bracket. So split the difference, and figure half a million, and figure what you need to do to get that kind of funding to start a project.
And if you're thinking that this is gonna be two years out for funding, don't start with that half a million, start with 750.
Yeah.
Because it's not going down. And you can see what, just from a bid from three years ago to what it is today, and these aren't even accurate, these are us just throwing out a number for you. You, it more than doubled.
It just, it just, it's, it just strikes me as a little odd to like, put something on the ballot, say, we're gonna issue a bond for 750,000 to raise money for the sand shed. And, but we don't actually know what it's gonna cost, we just think it's gonna be 700. That seems like a tough sell to the voters.
It is, but you also have to look at, you can go to the voters and say, look, we've had estimates over the last three years. They keep raising. This is a goal that we need to shoot for, this is what we're looking at. We can't get anybody to commit to us because we don't have any money. And these 30-day bids can go up 150 grand in 30 days.
Yeah.
I mean, it's very up and down, the market with the steel. I know Capital Steel Buildings, we have price changes every four weeks. It very rarely goes down.
Yeah.
Most of the time, it's going up. They're trying to build these things to order, and they're usually going up on price. So 30, 60, 90 days, they're gonna change drastically.
This is sort of another point, just to specifics, didn't the RFP specify four-foot concrete walls?
They did, we had one bid with that. Four, the one I got was four down, eight up.
Yeah, well, it's four up, four down.
But then we got a bid on that RFP that's, that's proposing 11-foot above-ground walls, it seems like.
They're going out, basing it, by what I read, and Sandy and I talked about, that they're basing it on, that's the way it should be done.
Even though.
Even though that probably costs 200,000 more to do it that way.
Yeah.
They made more money on the concrete, and they spent less money on the steel.
It's weird to me that the RFP specified, this is how it was with the wall today, and they were like, no, we're gonna do it this way.
Yeah.
That changed though, because I know one of them that I did was four below, eight above. And then if it was four below and four above, that changed a lot. I mean, there's, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars right there.
Right, but I think we had settled on a four, four below, four above, that's right. We went back and forth with engineers from the state, and I think that's what we settled on.
State said at a foot above grade, they needed to have these little cutouts in the wall to let water in or out.
Yeah.
Which I understand sort of, because it's in a flood plain. You can't.
There was anything about removing the buildings in the initial one I did. So that adds cost too.
Yep.
So it does, I mean, there is a little bit of changes here, and I'm not trying to say you're doing it wrong. I just think that you need to be able to have some type of ballpark that's close enough that you're getting the same consistent bids. Because all of our bids should be pretty close to each other.
Right, well, that's, that's what I'm wondering, because I mean.
They shouldn't be that far apart.
We put some boundaries on it, and the Bread and Loaf just ignored them, and said, we're gonna build you 11-foot walls. I mean, it's like.
Well, they're actually 14-foot.
So, I mean, so we can make this more specific, but how do we know the engineering firms?
So then, then at that point, when it's more specific, and you have three people that bid it, and three of them are, or say, five people bid it, four of them are close to the same building, and one of them is Bread Loaf's building, you're gonna throw Bread Loaf's out because it's not the same. And you're gonna look at the four that are close to the same building, and you're gonna see what you're getting for quality, what you're getting. Sometimes the name and the steel means a big game. I'm not sure who PSS is, but we got, who they're using for their steel. But you can get a building, Renegade Steel, and you can get a Capital Steel building, and you put them next to each other. The Capital Steel building is gonna be 24 gauge steel, the Renegade's gonna be 26. There's big differences throughout the buildings themselves. So unless that part of the building is being specified as well, then you're not getting. Then you're not getting apples for apples because somebody could say, oh, we're gonna do twenty-eight gauge steel on the outside because it's gonna save us.
Yeah, yeah.
Ten thousand dollars, but we're gonna charge you the same for it. So if you're not specifying each of those individual things, it's gonna make it a lot harder for you to make a decision. Cause the bids are gonna be a lot further out.
Right.
I'm not gonna bid on something less than twenty-four gauge steel. Because that's what I like to use and that's what I'm gonna do. So if you guys specified twenty-six, I would bid on it. But if you're gonna get a price from me, it's gonna be twenty-four, cause that's what I use. So you're kinda getting that from Bread Loaf. They're saying, this is what we're gonna do. And then you choose based on that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know if there's a planning committee for this.
Hmm.
Or this just falls on Phil saying, I need something and then you guys say here and throw it out there, but.
This is the planning committee. We're, we're trying to get up a capital planning committee, but we haven't recruited enough members for it yet.
So I feel like that should be something that, cause again, the cart's before the horse. And that should be something, if you're reaching out to other people in town, I'm in the town, I wanna help. If I can help do this and help you guys make the right decision, I wanna help with that. I, I'm here too, so.
I just. Maybe we should talk to the bank.
Yeah, um, it seems.
We know this is a minimum of six months out. Next spring is the absolute earliest. You don't even think about doing anything. Because we're coming to a time crunch where we're gonna have to start putting sand back in the shed we have.
Sure.
Yeah.
So it stays dry for winter.
Right.
But by December and January. Todd'll probably say the same thing. That's still pushing it to get a building in here by.
No, you have to have the, I have to order the building three months before I want it onsite to, to make sure that it's there. So you would have to have a contract signed in October, November for me to put up a building in the spring. And that's gonna be the same for all these guys, no matter who they're getting the steel from. So.
Well, you have to get, you have to get, I mean, if you're gonna go for a bond or whatever, you, you didn't wait till March for.
And you.
A vote.
So I would say this is a twenty twenty-seven project. You have a little bit more time to plan. Okay, so more people involved that can help plan. I wanna help, but I don't really wanna help because I wanna be able to bid on it.
That's the thing is they got, I don't have a situation where Todd helped us come up with the RFP and now Todd's bidding.
Right, and I don't wanna do that, cause I don't wanna be in that situation. But I, I do think if I could guide you into the idea of getting somebody to help with that. Cause I would like to be able to bid on it, especially being so close to home.
What should we do? What should we do?
Well, ah, I mean. Okay, I, I, I'm definitely on board with refining our requirements so we get better bids. I, I, um, um, I'm, jury's out. To me, as far as like if we can request funds before we have a closer idea of cost. I just think it's a, it's a hard sell, but.
So.
I, I just, I hate the idea of like, oh, we're gonna, we didn't, we got the RFP, we set up a bid, and now we're like, oh, we're actually gonna change the RFP to make it better and solicit bids again. But it sounds like maybe that's the best way to go.
And I want you to remember, the time that this is going out. What you're getting for a bid right now is not gonna be what it's gonna be at the beginning of twenty twenty-seven. So when you're, if you're gonna use this to go to the town and say, look, we need this kind of money. It's not gonna be the same money when you get to doing the project. And you don't wanna be going back to the town, oh, we have change orders and we have this and we need to raise more money. It'd be better to shoot for that upfront. So I would say look at a high bid right now of a million dollars. And that's what you're looking at. And then depending on how you refine it. You could always bring money down and if there's a way to keep surplus, we need new trucks.
I, I like the idea of, uh, you say March, we can have a vote for a bond, right? We, we're gonna need the people's.
A bond or a bank loan or however we wanna.
So tha- that bumps it out another full year after that, minimum. So there, so really, i- until we get money, there's no sense of worrying about any design or anything.
Correct.
Until we know, one, we got X amount of dollars to do what we need to do.
So we're gonna have to wait till March.
Table this whole thing.
Unless we had a special election about this. We did mention that to people at town meeting that maybe we'll call them for a vote. And we could do that.
So may, may, maybe this is a step forward is. Let's do some talking to a bank or whatever, like what's, however we would request this funding, let's just pick a number, a million for, just for hypothetical. What's the impact to the residents of Wallingford? Like how, what's the repayment terms? Like, like how that work? So we have some idea of cost. At the same time, maybe work on, I don't know, Todd can help us find someone to help us refine this. The, the RFP for it. Does that? I mean, does that make sense? Cause I don't, like, I don't know, like you say, like, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna get a million dollar bank loan to fund this. I have no idea what that means. Like, is that a five year loan? Does that, how, does that push up our taxes? Like what?
So I got from the Vermont Bond Bank, five hundred thousand for thirty years. And the rate at the time was four point three five. And you have, you can only pay interest, so you only pay two bits, two, uh. Two payments a year. The first payment is just interest and then the second payment is principal and interest. But I have a schedule here I could give you.
Okay.
But it's, uh, thirty years. You can go twenty or thirty years with them. But they only take applications twice a year, May or December. So you gotta get voter approval first.
So it's many.
And then they walk you through everything. They have to do everything if you get approved.
It sounds like a special election.
Into that, uh, we can pay off, we can pay it off early, right?
Right, you just, uh, so once you have the closing, the money, it says, I wrote down, the money goes to the US Bank. And then you draw the money by a requisition, so you don't take it all at once.
Aight.
And then you can place the rest of it in a money market up to three years with them and it earns interest.
So that would be the way to go with a million dollars because if it comes in at seven eighty. You're putting that two twenty into a, uh, interest earning account that's helping pay it off.
Yeah.
Less the burden of the taxpayer.
I mean, it's still a big line item to add to our town budget.
Absolutely.
It's gonna affect our tax rate. I, I just don't know.
Up to thirty years.
I don't know how much that would be. I guess that would.
So.
What's a thirty? Do they have payments?
What, what was the payment schedule for thirty years?
You pay interest only in May.
We're strapped until March, anyway. So we got a lot of time to learn about this.
Well, I like the idea of.
Thirty years, how much do you pay back? Three hundred.
We need, we need the information.
Eight hundred and forty-four thousand.
No, I would ask for a million dollars.
Five hundred.
Ooh.
And, and give the, give what we're gonna use back.
That's that forty.
So, uh.
Get a big turf.
What was that, what was that number you were throwing out there, Julie?
So on a five hundred thousand dollar loan, you pay back eight hundred and forty-four thousand.
A year?
No.
The whole, the whole loan.
Woo, okay, but what, yeah.
That's for a five hundred thousand.
That's five hundred.
So what, what are the two payments a year? How much, what are the payment amounts?
So, uh, let's see, May, uh, maybe, uh. May is just, I don't know, I don't think they write, May is interest only. Almost seventeen thousand. Is that in November? It looks like. Seventeen, if I'm reading it right?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five a year?
Yeah, thirty-five a year.
For thirty years.
Yeah, that'd be about right, three fifty, three fifty, three fifty would put you up around nine hundred and over. I imagine it was down as long as.
Yeah, well, the interest only thing will go down.
Well, that's what I'm afraid, like people longer.
And that's, they're gonna be.
And the worst part about this is, it, since we started, it was around two hundred and thirty thousand for a bigger building.
Yeah. Just, just the steel was like a hundred and eighty at that point or something.
And then he had the foundation, everything figured in. It was installed at like two thirty-two with it, something like that.
Just like all the other stuff, the more we drag our heat, the more it's gonna cost us.
And, and concrete has gone up forty dollars a yard.
And they put out the RFP. That's what we did out of the lake. You know, we did the project manager of the lake, Evan Fitzgerald, they put out the RFP.
Right.
That's, yeah, I mean, we have a couple of engineers in town, Anthony Ferruri, I mean, what about hiring and going out? To, uh, get some bids up for engineers or something and how.
Yeah.
Engineer be like at the, put out the RFP, and then he's project manager.
Yeah.
Yeah, who's gonna look at, who's gonna follow this million dollar project and make sure all these things that are happening?
Yeah.
When you ask for this, this gauge steel, make sure that's happening.
Right.
That, that's the hardest part when you're looking at these bids to see, because a lot of these won't say that. It's gonna show you that you're getting a forty by sixty or forty by eighty building, but you're not seeing what the actual component is. You don't know what grade bolts they're using, you don't know how thick the steel is. You don't know what the tensile strength is on the, on the trusses. There's a lot of things that aren't included in a bid like this.
There wasn't though.
And no, no, most people wouldn't know. I, I have many clients that wouldn't have an idea if we weren't providing that for them.
Yes, didn't we talk before about, wasn't this project, when we talked about getting a project manager?
I've always been in favor of a project manager on those.
There's some people local that do it, so it wouldn't hurt to, to have that involved. And then they'll actually go through all this bidding stuff for you too, and they're gonna come in like Phil does. And say, look, I went through all of these bids. This is the one I think we should go with and. And they can help you also make that decision instead of it just falling all on you. And are you gonna come down to make sure that the concrete's poured correctly and the anchor bolts were put in the right spot? Cause it's a nightmare when a concrete company gets hired separate from the steel company and the con, the anchor bolts aren't in the right spot. And then we're going backwards and we're drilling and epoxying and it's a nightmare. So you wanna make sure that those people that are doing that along the way, you really want a project manager for that.
Yeah, cause Sandy doesn't wanna go down there and watch.
If, if you're not gonna do that, you need at least a GC that would, that's done this and can show you that they've done this many buildings in that way. Because I've been on some that we've gotten taken over that are complete nightmares.
Yeah. So how, how far are we going down that road, Sandy? Like getting an engineer or a project manager? We just talked about it, we've never actually talked to someone about, about hiring somebody or?
No, we haven't gotten that far down. I mean, I'm wondering if the right steps should be to get something on the March ballot. Enough to include what we think it might cost.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-seven with an additional, I mean, I don't know if we can just. Contact a few local project managers, engineers and say like, what is the ballpark? So we can add that into.
And one more thing, if you're gonna do the engineering, so some of this is different. Like our engineers at General Steel and Capital Steel will provide all the engineering for us based on where we're putting the building. So I would possibly start with just a project manager and not go down the route because you get an engineer involved, you're talking thirty-five grand, you guys are gonna have to spend right away. And why spend that money if part of my bid, that's included in it? Because our engineers are designing that for you.
I guess we were looking for someone who could s- put the specifics in the bid, in the, in the RFP.
Which I can't do, cause then I.
I know, I know, but I, do we need an engineer that, that?
I don't think you need an engineer, I think you need a project manager.
Are you invisible project manager?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we're gonna need an RFP for that too, and what do you, what do we put in for that? Seriously? Like, what are the components that we want a, a project manager to do? So that would have to be. We'd have to go out to bid for a project manager too. So I'm wondering if that's what we would do. The March vote, once we get that approved, it should include what we think is, would be a project manager and the cost of the building. Then we go out to bid on the project manager.
Didn't Mark look at the other towns? Would the other ta, that has had these done recently? Could we see what possibly? I mean, do, maybe he has some of that information, like what they use.
Mark, does he?
Yeah, I'm wondering, you know, did they go out through a project manager and maybe we could. Yep, use those towns as guidance.
I don't see why not.
It doesn't hurt to.
I think, I think some of the smaller towns do it kinda funky, uh.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's definite, but.
Benson was kinda like, Benson was really hard to work with. They were like hillbillies out in the woods deciding what they were gonna do last minute. Got a couple of chuckleheads in there to put something up that's not exactly what they. We, none of us bid on what they put up.
Yeah, and I know a couple of the towns went. Insane in how much they spent too with the guidance that they had, so.
And.
It's been a little like, see, see what they did and don't go that route.
Yeah, well, the engineer can be a, a big downfall, but it can also help too. If you have an engineer that's also a project manager, that can help, but the engineering is where you're gonna spend the money. So if they're gonna sit down and they're gonna design this and they're gonna engineer it. Then some of the companies are gonna bid on it. Their hands are gonna be tied to specifically making apples for apples, which is gonna get you the closer bid. But you're also spending another thirty-five to seventy-five thousand. Some of these guys want a percentage. So if it's a million dollars, they're gonna be getting a hundred grand. So if you're willing to pay a hundred thousand dollars for somebody to tell you exactly what you need. Then you get apples for apples bids, but they're gonna get a percentage based on what you're telling them you want.
You're gonna spend it anyways.
Either way, you're spending it one way or the other.
How do we move forward tonight?
I mean, do, should we start with a, like a, like you know Evan pretty well? Could he just like, could you have an informal conversation like how? I, I don't, I don't, or do we come up with an RFP ourselves for a project manager?
I think you gotta deal with money first.
Well, that's, I'm, you know, it's all leading up.
You know, let's, you've got a year after you've get some money to start working on this.
Yeah.
And get it lined up. And then, because you don't wanna get, start another RFP right now and it's two years out.
I know, I know, but I, again, I, I just like, to go in front of the town and say, we need a million dollars to build the shed because we got a bid that was a million dollars. We got another one that was two hundred thousand, they didn't include the concrete, but we're going with a mil. It seems like a kind of flimsy case to put a big line item in your budget. Like, I think we need something, a little, something we could sink our teeth into a little bit more.
Yeah, you, you're gonna, you're gonna, people are gonna, uh, my theory is they're gonna stop bidding this, cause they know it's.
Yeah, yeah.
I know something you did. So many times, I got still guys that are mad at me, cause I called them.
And I'm saying, if we, if we get the money to hire a project manager or an engineer or something like that that helps us with that better bid. Then it gives us a ballpark figure, then we can, if we have the timing then to go in March, then for, to ask for the, uh, money that we can. Amount of money that we can actually support, like, hey, we've got some paperwork here from a qualified person.
But it's gonna change.
It will change. It's gonna change through more time.
And we make a generous, you know, allowance for that, but, but it just, I, it's, I, I don't know. That's, my feeling is that it's tough to go to the town to ask for a bond issue, um, based on.
All they can do is gonna know.
You, you, you know, it's gonna be half a million to a million, guaranteed.
It's, it's at least a half a million.
Guaranteed.
My last bid and I didn't have, taking the other stuff down. And it's, my price has gone up since then, so.
Why would she get this?
You're, you're, you're realistically, my bid right now would probably be around eight hundred thousand. So I know that you're up quite a bit already.
Right, right.
And I, I hate to say that million dollar range for you, but you shouldn't bring this to the voters until March anyway. And you're not gonna get this until twenty twenty-seven.
We could do it in November.
If you have somebody to do all the planning between now and then.
We're gonna, to get the money.
Oh, right, right.
Your money.
But then you have to go with the, that's what I'm saying. Then you have to go with a round number and say a million dollars if you're gonna go forward.
And, uh, should we spend?
To the people and, or not?
Should we spend some money to get a, to get a, like a, a, a more official?
Not, not until you get the voters to approve it.
Right.
I think you get the voters to approve it, a dollar amount.
So we would, so you're saying like, we shouldn't spend ten thousand dollars to hire, uh, uh, engineer slash project manager, whatever, to give us like. This is what, this is like your better RFP, this is a ballpark figure. You don't think we should take that step?
Um, you could, but you're gonna spend that money one way or the other. So if you're going to them and saying, okay. Say eight hundred thousand or a million. And you're getting the town to approve it, then you're taking out of that million for that project manager and that engineer. And then getting an apples for apples bid. Otherwise, you're gonna keep going. You're gonna keep kicking this down the road and then there's gonna be people that are just not gonna bid on it anymore. And then you're gonna be fighting to find somebody.
So, uh, is the way to move forward to, uh, have an early vote before March for?
I don't think we can decide that right now.
Huh?
I don't think we can decide that right now.
No.
To decide right now, this room, we're gonna do a special election and ask for a million bucks? I'm not.
Because there is no election.
Also, if you're gonna go for a bond, that's not gonna happen in May. They only do the bond, the bond vote. I can only pack for the bond twice a year. So that would be May, so November's not gonna help you.
And having a, any type of special one besides the additional cost. Normally, people are gonna come to say no more than yes, cause they have more of a vested interest.
Not many people at all are gonna come and they're gonna say yes.
Uh, people.
Well.
When it comes to your money, people are gonna speak up and say no.
When it comes to your money, people are going to speak up and say no historic, you know, with other things more than.
Especially if you alert them and say, come do it now.
That would be my concern is if we tried to do the special besides all the extra cost to that, is a lot of times the people that speak up more, other ones are in the negative.
But, but like Julie said, you can only apply for the bond.
And so you put it at a bar.
And we can only do it twice a year, so we're not going to gain anything.
You're not going to have a special election in May, in November and then go right to the bond.
Yeah.
Because you don't have a number to.
So it was May and December?
May and November.
November, so.
If you did a vote in March, got approval.
Would be the early, taking to apply anyways.
So give you time and.
Right. So, so we got time then?
I think tonight is the decision on the, the two requests.
Okay, so we can move on?
Yeah. I think we had to make a decision, yeah, you're going to make a decision on the requests that you received, so.
Well, I think we, I think we can probably say pretty comfortably, we're not going to accept either one of these bids as is.
We're going to table it.
What's that?
Table it.
Table it, okay.
So moving on to opioid settlement notice. Tom must opt in to this opioid settlement case by the end of September. We received a total of six payments from eleven thirty twenty-two through eight thirty-one twenty-four for a grand total of five hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Sixty-sixty, gentry.
Do you want to opt in?
Yes, yes.
I guess, I guess so, huh?
By consensus, okay.
Conservation Commission Workday. Ian attended, uh, the July twenty-eighth Conservation Commission meeting and Select Board Liaison. Ian has question, a question about free disposal of trash collected in the village. Conservation has a workday in October, consensus?
Could I, uh, just, they want to do a limited cleanup of the village using the green up bags from the spring that are left over.
Uh-huh.
And they're hoping that the land, the transfer station people will accept them the way they do green up bags.
Yeah. We need a motion for that.
So do we have to ask or?
Well, it's up to you if you want.
Huh?
You could just direct, you can, I can just let them know that, what you decide. I can let the transfer station people know if they, if conservation brings in these green bags, you could just accept them.
Okay.
If you want to do that.
But do we need to vote on this, Ian, or is it just a Conservation Commission thing?
No, we need to vote on it in order for the transfer station to accept the bags.
If you all agree, you can do it by consensus.
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 Yeah.
Okay. Agenda building, is there an item or topic you would like to see added to any upcoming Select Board comments and concerns. Other business.
Nice, you would text, will you look at it?
Board received a nice thank you card from Sasha Hour for the Town Scholarship Awards in June. Joe Kill of the Vermont Department of Forests, Parks and Recreation inspected the recreation area off Meadow Street on July twenty-ninth as part of the state, as part of a state requirement for recreation grants. The town received grants in nineteen eighty and two thousand and four. And a grant requirement is the land to be used in perpetuity for recreation. Only two notes made during the inspection was very small land and water conservation fund sign must be installed and scoreboard in the weed area, pass right field and the baseball field, baseball court should be repaired or removed. We have to provide photos, so I don't know.
I put up the sign, so that's done.
Huh?
I said, I've already put up the sign.
Oh, good.
I don't know if you want, just, we have, see if the.
Is that going to be part of the conservation or rec committee? That's probably a rec committee.
Oh, we don't really have, I think that's going to be a challenge, I'm just wondering if you, I mean, it's that scoreboard sign that's kind of out in the weeds, can we just see if the road crew would take it down?
Just take it down?
I mean, I don't think anybody.
Especially considering the size of it, it's more than, you know, like two people.
I haven't even seen.
Because you would need a proper, you would need a truck or something.
I don't know, like what's buried in the ground with the post.
Burned and placed.
I mean, if you want it repaired, that's a different thing, if we just want it removed. I mean, I don't remember anybody out there putting up the scores.
It's been in the ground for as long as I can remember.
So remove it.
That's my opinion, because it's, I don't think it's repairable by the way, looking at it, it looks rotted.
Yeah. Pick it up with the excavator.
Okay. We'll see if the road crew.
Gwen and Sandy attended a site visit on July twenty-ninth for the Elfin Lake Erosion Reduction Implementation Project with Evan Fitzgerald of Fitzgerald Environmental Associates. Bid to do August eighth and you will review them on, at the eighteenth meeting of August. Ah, Tyler McNanny, CEO of Filibert and Massive Demonstration Dimensions Basin Berry is interested in providing 3D printing services for the boy in a boot and would like to make a presentation to the board to discuss their services. Are we interested?
Yes.
We are?
Mm-hmm.
If you can attend the meeting, that'd be great.
So which upcoming meeting would you like them to attend?
It's possible, I guess.
First one in September.
September.
It's a Tuesday.
For the next one.
And then the following one we don't want to, because that's over in, September second.
I did talk to the guy that up in Rutland, I had talked to about this project and he felt like his 3D scanning and printing skills were not up to the task and he does more fiber grass, fiberglass fabrication. But if we, if we want to do 3D printing, he said he wouldn't bid on it.
My first thought is that there's going to be more people besides this person in the company, but they, they can't do anything until it's finished.
Right.
And it's, it's not finished. It's, it's, uh, he wants to finish, he wants to get it out of there, but I did go over and see him after I voted no on inside and, uh, he's, it is fragile, but I did get him to say it could last for fifty years outside, so, but he's going inside and we're going to get a, uh, the 3D, uh, and that is a pretty remarkable thing, he's, he's seen it and they said it'll come out exact and, uh, so, sorry, it's not quicker, but, but we can, we can talk to him, we'll find, we'll learn something.
It was encouraging for people to see the picture of what he'd done so far.
Yeah.
Pretty darn good.
Great work.